Okay.
I'm not gonna deal with it yet.
The, um...
Is that you?
No.
The first item on the agenda is to hear from Chet's garage regarding some of their concerns regarding the modification and adoption of the tow policy. Now, we have a... this is the way we have talked a little much because of the recording. Dennis, do you want to use the...
Oh, yeah, sure. That's all you got?
Except for me. Whoever wants to talk.
Don't want me to bring up Alan as you.
Okay. Mr. Supervisor and members of the board, pleasure to see you again on a matter so important. It is important. It's very important to three people whose your policy has changed through businesses: Chet's Garage, Hamiltonian Tow, Casey Tow. I spoke to... I didn't become associated with this issue until a few days ago while I was in the state of Florida. My town attorney was in the same state, but in the state of Incania, Colorado. I was not in Incania, but I couldn't find him. So I couldn't do much talking to him until this evening at about six fifteen. He did touch on this subject. I briefly told him what my perspective on it was, and I'll tell it to you again. Bear in mind that I've known you guys for a long time, and I know that you are good judges of fairness. And light duty, however, fairness is in the eye of the beholder at the time of judgment is being taken. What we have here is a situation that we think was fair before you changed your policy, of which Mr. What's his name? Adam, I knew his name, which Adamus didn't think was fair. As Dennis explained to me, what we're dealing with is nothing more than a policy or a rule rather than legislation or something between the two. But right, whether it's a rule or a policy, needs to be fair. And I don't think what you've done is fair. It is true that at one time, Mr. Kariki, to my right, was the complete owner of all three of these operations. Is that right? At that time, Mr. Adamus, he is not the complete owner. He is not the controlling owner of but one of these operations, that is Chet's Garage. The other two are in the hands of relatives, but they are in business on their own. And these operations have no connection with each other, and you're on their separate businesses. Mr. Kariki owns not more than 10% of the two in which he is not the controlling member or stockholder. And he is only holding 10% because he is giving his shares away to his daughters. And as probably most of you know, you can't give away anything more than $12,000 in value annually to a child without incurring a tax line, an estate tax line, or gift tax line charge. He has been giving them away as time has gone on, and he's at the point where he owns less than 10%, and he yearns to own 0%. But he is not in control of them. He is not the principal shareholder of the other two entities. Now, I only learned about a year ago that the state police has adopted a policy of dealing with the towing contractors in their communities, at least in Orange County and probably throughout the state. And apparently, they have a frequent need to call towing operators for incidents that occur which they are investigating. You get involved here because your police department investigates accidents, other problems that require towing. And I think we ought to all be on the same page. I think what's good for the goose is good for the gander. I think what's good for the state police is probably good for you. The policy was recently revised. Standards were adopted for control of one business by another proprietor of the same business, and we had no problem satisfying their criteria for the three entities being treated separately, as separate and independent businesses. Fairness, I think, requires each of them to be treated in the same way, separately and independently. Now, they are each entitled, it is to be a division of selection proceeding, a selection process of choosing who's going to get the call or to be handled on a fair basis. There are three businesses in town. When you call them, one, two, three, one, two, three, four, it's one, two, three, four. It's over. It can't be because the people in two bus... three businesses have the same last name. In fact, they're one, and they only get one out of two calls. That's not right. They ought to be equal for all, for each of them. Now, I would like to be able to provide you with the state police policy so that you can look at it, particularly if you have it. Now, do you have it?
Yeah, we have it. Dennis had that, what he used.
A minor opinion, of course.
Then they also have on their books a division dealing with how they determine whether two or more entities are really one for the purpose of referring matters to towing. And I would think, just in time, appreciate it. Are you closing? I'm gonna be closing pretty quickly, I can tell you. I can count the money. I just think you need to take another look at it. And perhaps ask some kind of discussion with the party of the second party participating. I haven't turned around yet to see what you've seen, but I think by now I might have heard it. So it's not... I think we ought to have a little roundtable discussion. What I'd like to say is this: there's a lot of controversy around this. Been going on with our police department for some time. The board asked the attorney for the town, Klikki, to put together a policy which he thought would be fair and equitable. He has done that, and he came back, and he discussed it with us, and we voted on it. Now, it's a policy, it's not a law. It is a policy. And we'll certainly open for what you've said tonight and your input. The board will have to entertain this along with Mr. Klikki in a discussion to figure out, is it fair? But I don't know the... I mean, I... certainly, all of us are smarter than any one of us, and we have to digest this.
That's not always true, but in this case, I agree.
Well, boy.
Yeah.
Okay. But anyway, so, I mean, I hear what you have to say, and I'm glad for that input. I don't know where it'll turn out, but we will entertain this. I mean, this is a work session tonight for the input, certainly, all your citizens in the town of Goshen. And we want to... we want to be fair. Okay? We want to be fair. Okay? And so we'll take this input and go from there. And Dennis, do you have any other comments for the board?
No, other than, at record, what you, as supervisor, just indicated, that I had a long conversation, I believe it was long, with Alan tonight on the phone.
Oh, I forgot the bill.
Yeah, glad I reminded, yeah. And I... as the board knows, the effort was to bring some fairness and some, what I call legitimacy, to this issue, because as the board is aware, and I think the public should be aware too, we get constant complaints, at least my office does, Alan, in regards how our towing policy, if you want to call it that, covers incidents in the town, how charges are made, costs for removal, cleanup, and things of that nature. And this was an attempt by the board, not to penalize anyone, but to bring what I consider to be competition more into the picture, so as to alleviate perhaps what I call an economic burden on some of the people who are having to pay these bills. The service is necessary, don't get me wrong. And I struggled with, as I know the board is aware, with the fact that maybe we shouldn't have a policy. Maybe we shouldn't even get into the regulation. There was also concern that we should get into more regulation in terms of cost or fee. We don't want to do that. My own personal philosophy is that that's just a terrible concept for a government to get involved in pricing, if you will, in someone's private business. So this was an attempt to alleviate some of the concerns, and again, what I, as I said, do was to engender more competition in the field so that the costs incurred by the citizenry and the residents, and/or non-residents who come involved with these types of charges, had some more certainty, if you will, in regards to the cost expenses and things of that nature.
Is the policy that you compare deal with issues of competition, price, and so forth?
No, it does not.
Okay. But what we effectively done is reduce the number of competitors to two?
Well, to two groups. And again, I think it's fair to say, my analysis and the head of the boards was that there seemed to be two groups, if you will, of what's called the tow operators. The Kariki family, to whatever extent they're related, physicality, offices, location, or otherwise, no idea. Okay? Didn't even investigate that. What are we concerned with that? Okay? Historically, just telling you what was presented to us. Including, Alan, so you're aware, information from the police that on occasion, more than one of that group, that's called Kariki group, if you will, would show up at a service call, be it K Team, or Chet's, or two or three, if you will. And it was confusion.
I think that's not...
I believe it has also, because I know the police were instructed to so notify everyone and to keep it on the up and up. The other thing, and another boarder's game is, because we had some trouble getting accreditation on this, Goshen, as you know, uses 9/11 for the dispatching service. 9/11 cannot do it by incident. As such, that's why our system, as the board is aware, is a day system, meaning any calls or assignments during an entire, if you will, day period is to one entity. All right? And now, in fairness, Alan, and the board should be aware, it's also the... some of the letter I saw from, I believe it was over Raymond Corp., the signature, indicated that your clients also had an issue with the tonnage or weight requirements in terms of whether any other applicant and/or towing operation within the community has status, if you will, to handle light vehicles, which are traditionally your passenger, or heavier vehicles, which traditionally lead up to, including your tractor trailer trucks. And I don't know, I didn't hear you mention that in your statement.
Of course, I don't know enough about that.
Understood.
This...
Right.
I hope to learn.
Right. And the intention, and again, I did explain this to Mr. Lippman, the intention is, as the board knows, we did this early last December. We finalized it. We afterwards, I know I directed that copies of all the policy, et cetera, be sent out to all the operating facilities within the town, just in case there was pushback. Because we didn't give up public relations. You know, we didn't feel that was what we were after.
I didn't see that.
And I apologize. I know you didn't doubt. I just wanted the board to be aware that I did make known to Mr. Lippman the timeline, and that this wasn't done quickly, or rushed through, or anything else. And the comments, those tonight, be it orally or written, are certainly welcome, and I can assure you, the board will absolutely look at them and do whatever is necessary, whether it be call further meetings, or conferences, or anything.
You will accept comments after tonight? You are... I don't know. I turned mine off, and it didn't stop. You will accept comments after tonight? Yes. You're talking about written comments?
Either way.
But I do want to get this thing on the book.
Is it on the book?
No, because this has been a... this has been an ongoing with the citizenry. I'm not talking about the towers. I'm talking about the citizenry. I can't tell you how many times people call me and say, you know, it was outlandish, the amount of money was charged for cleanup, or towing, or storage, or this or that. And I think the board behind all of this is looking for the competitive part to make these people understand what it is they're getting into. And in fact, we probably need to address that issue at some point in time.
Well...
I mean, Dennis and I met with a client from Florida, or Warwick.
Yeah, Warwick.
Who just sat on our shoulders about how he was treated, and the costing incurred so forth and so on. And what do we have to do with that? Nothing. But it's this kind of... so, between the police and the citizenry, that's why I asked Dennis, Dennis, we need to get back into this thing, develop a policy or a procedure that we can follow. May I ask you a question?
Sure.
You said earlier, and you said to me on the phone, that it's two groups. Three groups. The second group?
I consider it to be the Adamas group, whoever they are.
I think it's singular.
I do not know. In all honesty now, you know, I was not concerned with LOCs, corporations, individuals.
I think he's got one operation.
I don't know. I was... my impression was, he at one time was involved in solely what I would call light vehicles, the passenger cars. My understanding also is that he had larger equipment, which he could range out into or add something additional to handle it or cover heavy vehicles, larger than passenger cars.
But I mean, there's only one operation.
That's very possible. I do not... I have to refer to application.
In Goshen.
I... you may be absolutely correct. I don't know.
But I don't think that what you've done is going to stimulate competition, and certainly not going to affect what people charge. I don't think you want to become regulators.
We just... yeah, I think it's fair to say.
Right. And I don't think there's anything you can do that will control pricing, shorten regulation, except to talk to them independently, and like a Dutch uncle, tell them, if you don't take care, you're going to subject yourself to regulation.
Well, we don't just... it's fairly followed by that question. I think the board needs to be aware of this, too. As Alan, I believe, discussed, I apologize, Mr. Lippman, we discussed. Our police department is very concerned, and was very concerned when I first voiced to them the fact or potential, we might do away with policy. We may not even want to be involved in what I call the Goodhouse Keep the Seal of Approval for an informator for two operations or four operations, whatever number there are, within the town of Goshen, and open it up. The police were very concerned, I expressed, with safety issues, any number of vehicles or entities responding to a call that was opened. And we don't want that either. Yeah, exactly. So again, all these issues, as the board knows, we struggled with them for a while. We're just trying to get a handle on it in terms of, without getting into someone's business, the operations and handling, if you will, of these incidents when they arise within the town of, by the town of Goshen.
Well, what we can do, we'll take your comments this evening, and I'm sure there'll be more comments from Mr. Adamas and others. And we'll go at it one more time, see if what we've done is correct or incorrect. But...
I need to have another comment. That's a very good question. Next, February 4th?
Oh, no, I'm not... you know, I don't know.
Don't know.
But we will be working on this. But again, there's a lot of history on this, and it comes from two sides. It's coming from the citizenry, some in town, some out of town, that think that they were not treated properly price-wise, which is a background. And the other is the Mr. Adamas' perspective, that he was of a competitive standpoint, like there were three of you and one of him, and so forth. And we ask Mr. Klikki to get to the bottom of this, and come forward to us with what you think we need to do. There are three divisions. Well, I think I understand what you're saying. Right, right. I understand what you're saying, and I think we all understand what you're saying. I want to ask you a question. Two questions. The first one being, as far as the operations, are they all domiciled under one roof? We weren't sure if they were in different locations.
They are in different locations.
Good. When they file financial statements, do they...
Separate.
Do they prepare consolidated statements? Separate corporation?
No.
Showing the whole operation? I'm just... I'm asking these questions, because these are two questions that are truly...
Separate.
And truly and separate tax returns.
One other aspect that I was interested in, Alan, and the impound facility, a separate impound facility also.
Separate impound facility, is that right?
Totally, again, no commingling of vehicles in any way, shape, manner, or form on an impound.
They do use the same impound, but they leave impound space for one impound, same as the Dallas, we could give impound space from Goshen Clinton. He does not own Goshen Clinton.
So two of these companies lease space from Chet's.
Okay, yeah, not a problem. I just, yeah, I wasn't sure. I did not know. I did not understand.
So we're going to ignore what you're asking about, but otherwise, they are completely separate.
The town approved impound parts, but we had to go through this.
Oh, sure, the code.
No, we know.
I just want to establish...
At one time, we got the only impound in the town of Goshen.
Right.
Far as I know right now.
Okay.
It's a downtown yard. But...
It's easy to not make it through all the steps, I think.
Yeah.
I think I was here.
Yeah. Well, I don't know, maybe you've forgotten, Alan.
No, I didn't. I didn't forget it. So I just meant I did. Any other questions from the board?
Only one I would have is, I don't know how you want to proceed, protocol or procedurally speaking. You want Alan to go through my office, and I'll keep you abreast, or...
I think so.
Yes, but fairness, because I don't know what shape it's going to take yet, Alan, whether you've written comments or requested further conference or...
Well, certainly some writings.
Yeah, understood.
Did the state police change your policy, or did they always have the policy? They always had a policy. Right. It changed, as I remember it, about two years ago. It changed. And they recognized you as three separate corporations in the state police? They, I think, then elected to establish the criteria by which they would judge whether related entities were one or separate. Related, one or another. But they adopted this a year, year or two ago, and we looked at them, looked at the standards, and we complied, to keep them separate. We have their light duty list. I'll give it to you. Adamas, Chet's, Hamiltonian, K Team, it's all four different entities. Go through. Well, I think what we need to do, I don't... I don't want to get into a contest this evening. Mr. Adamas, either also, I think we deal with our attorney on this.
I just got one comment.
All right.
I know Mr. Lippman was speaking about the state troopers, but you failed to mention how the village operates, as in one Chet's or the Kariki clan, and one myself. You failed to mention that. Or you mentioned the troopers.
I haven't gotten there yet.
You haven't gotten there yet?
No, I'm going there.
Oh, okay. Because the state troopers are revising how they're doing it as well.
I have an open invitation, just like here. Okay.
Okay.
So you have more, Alan?
Just one question. Alan, what I have is Troop F Zone 2 telling you information from May 1, 2012. Is that the most, was the one?
That sounds like...
Just make sure it's the same way.
Okay. So only six months? Anyway, what I'd like to do then...
That was the date on.
We do have several items in the agenda tonight, and what I'd like to do is have all this information funnel to Dennis. The challenge is still for Dennis to come back to the board with whatever policy and procedure the town of Goshen should follow. So folks, thank you very much for your input.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Happy New Year.
I'm so sorry you came back to the call, Alan.
No, it's wonderful. I said battery is morning.
Alan, what you're... what you're... your votes might be in person.
Okay, thank you very much.
I've been yanked by a battery.
You know, you don't have to leave. You could stay.
I know. Why? You like the entertainment?
Okay. We got to get out, guys. We got a lot to go on here tonight. The next item is review Nugent-Hausler, Inc., contract proposal of the town of Goshen for the 2012 audit and authorize the supply for signing the same. Now, what happened is, back in December 13, 2012, Nugent-Hausler put together a proposal that was for the audit of our 2012 audit, for the downtown offices in this building, minus the Justice Department. And somewhere in this contract, it said how much money it was. It was twelve...
Twenty-three thousand?
Twenty-three thousand. It's page 18, I think.
I think the last page.
Oh, yeah, yeah, page seven. Twenty-three thousand. Okay? So I talked to the finality commissioners, and he and I agreed that we have now, we've audited the police last year, we've audited the courts this year, we were auditing, every year we audit the downtown offices. One place we have not audited is the Highway Department. So we asked Nugent-Hausler to put together a proposal for the Highway Department. Well, it came in at quarter of five today, and I had a problem with it, because they're talking about anywhere between $2,800 and $3,400 versus doing the entire downtown for $23,000. So by Thursday night, I'm going to try to have some resolution with them on what they're going to charge us. But Phil and I both think that it's very important that we have an audit of Highway, because we've not had one since we've been here, just like we didn't have one of the courts, and we didn't have one of the police. And we're going to go out and see if we can get a grant or someone to do one on dial bus.
Well, I was just going to ask that question, the dial bus part.
And it's not part of it. Because that one will be shared between us and Chet's.
And that's a federal program.
And that's a federal program. We get grants to do that and not have to pay for it at all. So with that, we're not going to do anything tonight, but I'd like you to read these things between now and Thursday. I will try to get greater definition from Nugent-Hausler on why it's so expensive for Highway when it should be much easier. I was thinking $1,500 would be funny, but I haven't talked to him. So with that, with that one, once you've got some comments, Phil and I are going to manage that. I mean, just the reason we came to this is we figured that it's just another department in the town of Goshen. We need to cover this with a broad brush and do all the departments. I can't figure out why they only did select the departments and not the others, and now we're trying to make it right. And just make sure the whole town is audited, so mainly, it's to help us operate the town efficiently. I mean, we're not looking for anything out of the ordinary. What we're looking for are things to help us make decisions and just work more efficiently. So all the departments should be audited, and that's why we did that. You know, it's also interesting, Phil and I both are aware that there are a lot of municipalities don't have annual audits by an outside auditor. And we feel philosophically that's a mistake, because there's nothing better than auditing yourself by an outsider to say, well, you're going right and wrong, and how are you going to get better? And things today, you don't wait for the state to come in and audit you. When the state comes in to audit, you say, here's a copy of the last five audits, or When the state comes in to audit, you say, here's a copy of the last five audits or six of those we've had since the last time you were here, and we're here to, we learned and here's what we did about it. Okay. The next item is, uh, you'll recall, we had, uh, when we went out for competitive bids, uh, RFP for, uh, demolition of the Slade School Building. Uh, it came to pass that the asbestos analysis that we had by Quest Industries was several years old, and, and so we, along with the village, said, okay, let's put some money together, go out and get another assessment. We've got that assessment, and, uh, and so I'd like, uh, George to take the lead on this discussion if you would.
Okay, I will. Um, the quote that came in, um, we had, it was very much open-ended because the person told us that, okay, I'll, I'll demolish the building, but I really don't have a really good idea at all of how much asbestos is in there and how much it's going to cost. And when we spoke to him further after we decided that none of the bids were going to be accepted, um, it was a couple of hundred thousand dollars. So it was a tremendous amount of money, so we backed off of that. Our next attempt now was to try and do just the asbestos abatement. And in your pack tonight, you see that thing from Quest that came in on December twenty-sixth, or I shouldn't, I shouldn't say it came in, it was authored on the twenty-sixth. So I spoke to Paul Rodriguez, he's the person who authored that. I spoke to him today, and I also spoke to Sean, and this is what I have for you, to give you an update. What I'm trying to accomplish is to get a figure as best I possibly can to find out how much this is going to cost before I incur more expenses with an RFP and other, there's a variance that you have to get and so on and so forth. So, uh, in speaking with Paul today, he, uh, called and spoke to a gentleman by the name of Fred Lutrell, and he is with Asbestos Corp. of America. Interestingly enough, the Asbestos Corp. of America, uh, did a, um, an RFP, what I was told, in two thousand and five for asbestos abatement for the, uh, Town of Goshen. Anyway, at no charge to the Town or the Village, that this gentleman is going to give us a phase one, two, and three ballpark figure of what it would cost to do the asbestos abatement. In speaking with Paul today, just to give you some further background information, if in fact, uh, I mean, this is going to be expensive. I mean, there's, there's no, there's no question about it. I mean, when all is said and done, between the asbestos abatement, the monitoring that has to take place, which is thirty percent basically of what the RFP will be, and then you have a core building that's left, demolition of what they refer to as the clean demo. You're probably talking ballpark figure around five hundred thousand dollars. Uh, and again, that's just, you know, a very, very rough, uh, cost. But to get back to the heart of the matter, what we're going to, I think, be able to determine now through this phase one, two, and three from this, um, Fred Lutrell, uh, we'll be able to get a ballpark figure of what it's going to cost just for the asbestos abatement. If that comes in and we decide to go forth along with the village, because this is a joint effort between the village and the town, um, there will be a spec that will be developed by whoever we decide, somewhere in a ballpark figure of four to six thousand dollars. That includes a variance that you have to get from the Department of Labor anytime that you're dealing with asbestos. And as I just said, um, the, um, once you start doing the asbestos abatement, you have a monitoring thing that has to take place, which is about thirty percent of the cost. So that's where I am with it at this particular point. And, uh, what I said to each one of these individuals is what I'm trying to do is get back to the boards with spending as little amount of money as possible so that we can kind of get our heads around this type of thing and see whether or not we're going to proceed. A thing that you also should be aware of though is, is that it just gets worse. The asbestos abatement in two thousand and five was bad. Two thousand and twelve is worse, and there's some likelihood that there could be a collapse in the building. And once the collapse takes place in the building, that means the whole building is asbestos. So it's, it's going to be a difficult decision, but that's what I know at this particular point, and I can answer any questions you might have, or whatever.
When we, I think it was two thousand and four when we took down the mansion, it had asbestos around it, and we went out, the demolition, what they did in that case, and I don't know if it's still pertinent or you can do it in New York State then. What they did, they demolished the entire building in place, and they wet it. They flooded it with water, and from my understanding, then they, they tore the, well, it was wet, they removed it all of the way, and then they sucked all the water out and disposed of the water somehow. Now, I don't know if those kind of procedures can be done today or not.
Interestingly enough, um, one of the things that Paul Rodriguez told me today was that part and parcel of this RFP, if we ever get to that particular stage, uh, they'll require that we have a power source, which we do have out there, and a water source. So apparently, at least some parts of it, is going to be required, or, or. Uh, another interesting thing that, um, all of you should be aware of is, and I, I had no idea that this was going to happen, but if you, if we went ahead with the asbestos abatement, fifty to sixty percent of the building is going to be gone. You're going to be looking at a structure that looks like a parking garage or something along that line. So it's, you know, quite, quite a bit of an amount of, uh, asbestos that's going to be taken away.
Well, the original proposal back in two thousand and five, it, it just talked about the basement, right? Can't do that down there on the ground. You know, the place they talked about asbestos in the basement, the furnace and all, up in the ceiling. And now, I, I read this tonight, it's all over the place.
Well, you know, we did, I mean, truly, they, when they did this analysis back in two thousand and four or wherever I was bringing it to the board then, there'd been borings all over that thing and determined that there was basically the asbestos was limited to the border room and the stairwell. And then all these other things didn't add up. Well, now they're finding it those other places, and so it is what it is.
Yeah, they are finding it, and then also what was not asbestos in two thousand and five now has become asbestos. And I'm saying that kind of tongue-in-cheek.
Wow.
What I'm saying is, is that, what I'm saying is, is that, no, right. What I'm saying is, is that they didn't think of asbestos in that category, let's say tiles as an example. Now, by the twenty-twelve standards, which has become more stricter, that is an asbestos, and you have to take it away with proper asbestos abatement.
Yep. Okay, very good. George, thank you very much. So you're going to hear back from this.
Yeah, but when I get, when I get this report back from this Fred, uh, Lutrell, I'll certainly share it with you folks.
And we need to, we need to share this information with the village too, if you with Kyle or with, uh, the JRC and all of them, so they know where we're at.
Right.
Okay. Good. Thank you, George. The, the next one is yours as well, which is discuss the current situation and changing insurance carriers for retirees.
There's a backdrop for the public that is here, uh, the cost of health insurance, especially through the NYSIP program, is, um, very costly. So what the board tried to do, myself spearheading that, is try and mitigate that to some degree. Uh, we thought we were successful, and we were starting out very slowly with the retirees. However, in your packet tonight, there is a memo there, and essentially, you know, there's a lot more to the story, but I'll cut it down to the, to the, to the specifics. We had our Medicare-eligible people that were going to Hartford, and as it turned out, the Hartford Part D program was actually going to work out better than the, um, NYSIP program. However, when, uh, NYSIP's rules and regulations were reviewed, you can't take your Medicare-eligible people out unless you take all of your retirees out. And we have four retirees that are beneath, beneath the age of sixty-five, so they don't qualify for Hartford. So what we're doing is going to just leave them with NYSIP. NYSIP says you can't do that. It's all or nothing. So I spoke to the supervisor about it. We had to make a decision because this was a decision that had to be made. Some of these people were enrolled in two-parties, so we really had to do something quick. So anyway, the bottom line at this particular point is we have now canceled out the Hartford, uh, Plan D. Everyone is back in NYSIP because you can't go against that. I, I couldn't go against that policy and then find out that, you know, something's going on and jeopardize everybody with NYSIP. So therefore, that's where we are at this particular point. Now, I guess that's the bad news. The good news would be is if we proceed forth and we have our negotiations with CSEA, and we have a larger number of people that are going to be leaving NYSIP and going to, uh, MDP or some other, uh, place like that, they will be able to ensure those people. So eventually, what I'm hoping might occur is we would have, and I'm just mentioning names, it could be something else, MDP with the rest of the people, that's negotiated with the contract negotiations, and then those people would be covered by MDP, and then we would be able to put the people back into Hartford. So in the long run, hopefully it'll work out.
I guess in retrospect, the, first off, is, uh, what we were doing was not included in the two thousand thirteen budget, so we can stay with NYSIP and it's fine. For the public, the medical insurance for a policy for a family today for each of our employees is at or around twenty thousand dollars. And it's going up seven point two or seven point four percent. Was going up eleven point nine, but NYSIP has finally lowered it back down. So it was going to be an excess of twenty thousand dollars per employee. Our employees do not contribute. Say it again. Our employees do not contribute toward that. That's a cost borne by the town and the citizens of town. Now, that being said, we have to do something to mitigate this, as George was saying. Every other municipality is doing the same thing. This is breaking our backs, breaking our backs. Now, you read in the newspaper, uh, this past week with Middleton, where Mr. Mayor Stedden, the Stefano was all riled up because the unions are pushing back and there's a ninety-day, uh, notification period, et cetera, et cetera. I don't know what, they're using another company called CDPH, but we're looking at better one for us with the, the MDP. Whatever it is, we've got a year now, and Phil and I are in the negotiating team, and we're negotiating currently with both PBA and the CSEA. We've got things set up for that. But we have to do something. Uh, we can, we are truly, when you talk about not sustainable, what we're doing is not sustainable. When I got here six years ago, it was fourteen thousand dollars, and now it's going to be twenty-two thousand dollars with what we're paying. And, uh, it, and where's it going to end? And I guess there's no way to invite it. So, but these other plans that we've come up with are, I think, superior to what we have with NYSIP. Much better for the employees. So I, I think it's, I'm not going to say an easy sell, or we'll have to look at it every way but Sunday, and see if we can find something better, cheaper, more sustainable. Those are the three things we have to do, and I think we will. And now we've got a year to do it in, since we're fighting a bullet on this one for this year's cost, so with that.
I just wanted to say one, one other thing about it, and, uh, people, some people who I know, uh, quite well, who are in the private sector, and, uh, I understand, one of the reasons why people come to work in the public sector is, is they feel that they're getting benefits, whether it's retirement and whether it's health insurance and so, so on. I understand that completely. However, just to draw some analogy with the private sector, there's more than one person that I know quite well. They just got letters from their employer. They're retired. They got letters from their employer, and I'm not talking about, um, XYZ company that has an office. I'm talking about major Fortune five hundred companies.
General Motors.
And they just got a letter saying, we're out of the health business. Here's, here's two thousand dollars. Take care of your health insurance for the rest of your life. I mean, it's just happening all, all of us, along with pensions, saying their pension was supposed to be X amount of dollars. Now, we ran out of money. We don't have any money left. The pension is gone. So I understand the, the public sector is different, but, uh, we really have to do, address some things in some way, shape, or form, and I certainly hope that our employees, uh, whether it's PBA or whether it's the, uh, DBW, understands what's happening here because it's just getting totally out of hand, and it's, uh, it's a problem. We're trying to address it, but boy, it's, it's tough to, to do it because there's all these rules and regulations. Thank you.
It is good. Okay, very good. Okay, the next one is, uh, we've been waiting for a proposed dog control officer contract with the Goshen Humane Society, and what we got, I didn't understand, so I gave it to the attorney for the town and said, yeah, hey, take a look at this, and, uh, would you lead us through this? It doesn't, it appears that we're going to have to go back to the barrel and say, we don't know what you're talking about.
Yeah, what you have here is a contract for the provision of services by the Humane Society. We've always had a contract with them for those types of activities. This contract was to also, uh, contemplate and have included in it, uh, the provision for them to perform the duties of the animal control officer. It does no respect address that. I got calls in to the attorney who drafted it, and I'm guessing there was either a breakdown in communications or fearing the worst, the Humane Society is persisting in a position that they're not going to provide us with that service.
Very good. I, I agree, that's where it's at.
Yep.
So I, uh.
By Thursday, I'll, I'll know.
Well, if they're not providing, why do they even bother doing it?
Good question.
Well.
Because we don't have.
Right, in fairness, I, I'm hoping it was a breakdown in communication.
Yeah, it is. Between, in fact, we've not got a, a handshake with the, the, uh, Humane Society. Negotiated, uh, price for them to do it, okay? What's reflected in this contract doesn't even talk about that price.
No, no mention.
So, uh, we just, I think their attorney is, I definitely didn't understand the.
That's right, so it's backed, and, uh, it'll be ironed out.
Okay.
You're hearing the Phil, right, Jim?
You know, one, one, you know, when we're talking about this, the, uh, the Goshen Humane Society is, I think, doing a yeoman's job. You know, I'm a real animal lover, and, uh, I captured a cat four or five months ago. Coyotes were out after it. I captured it, I have a heart trap. They took it immediately. Uh, I had another cat die, so I said, well, bring this one home, and I brought this one home. I've got a call from them. How's it going? What can I do to help? It was a feral cat. And boy, I mean, they really, really are interested in the welfare of this particular animal. So when we all, I mean, you know, a lot of people, particularly back when we had the A team and the B team, and they were written and writing with each other, I don't know what it was all about, but the animals get good care and people care about them and so, or whatever that's worth, you know? Okay, well, pursuant of then the dog control officer contract, well, we get that straight, then we're going to have to discuss how we're going to access the dog control van so they can have our van, what that process is. Which Dennis brings us now back to the discussed petition by Gerda Gardens Limited to rezone the two seventy-one Maple Avenue from RU to S.
Yeah, the board has a copy of that petition as previously explained to the board. Uh, this is within your discretion as to whether or not to entertain this or not. Uh, basically, what the petition, uh, calls for or requests is that this thick or parcel property is a farm operation within an RU zone. We do not allow mining operations in the RU zone. We do have an overlay zone where we could move either a portion of this property or move the zone, if you will, to cover a portion of this property. You then run the issue though of possibly spot zoning and/or opening other rural RU rural residential zone areas in Towne, Goshen, open up to mining operations. Uh, uh, the, the planning board is not familiar with this yet. They're aware it's been filed. They've made, uh, they have not studied it or analyzed it. The building department is, is concerned with why the town would be interested in doing this. Uh, and as I assure them, as I assure the board, uh, I've talked to the attorney who represents the applicant, et cetera, and basically the proper procedure would be to ask you to have them come in, explain to you, or make their, uh, them come in, explain to you or make their arguments, if you will, to see if in fact it makes sense from the town's perspective to pursue something like this. So right now, I don't find a lot of encouragement for this. I don't find a lot of anti-position also, but again, a great number of people in the town are not aware of it yet. But I would suggest that the next step would be to invite the applicant.
Let me bring them in at the next work session so the board can hear what they're going to do and then we could ask them questions about what they've... They've got to build justification for it.
Yeah, the board needs to understand this is totally within their discretion. There is no mandatory analysis, look at, review, or approval, these type of things. Under state law, you have the right to zone or not zone. And we're providing almost no rationale. So I want you to understand.
Right now.
It is not, okay?
So we would have to change the law.
Correct. Correct. Which would require a seeker, et cetera, et cetera.
This could be an expensive process. It's not like just...
Yes, I believe it would be. Now, you could pass a great deal of cost, if not all, onto the applicant.
No, that's what I'm told. For them, it's going to be very expensive.
Yeah, I guess they feel that it's economically viable from their business plan, but I don't know. I have not discussed it with them.
We can't get involved in the economic...
No, it's not our...
If you're involved in the right type of zoning for the town...
Now, just so the board's aware, John Capella, who is their attorney, did speak to me today and I indicated to him, as you indicated to yourself, that the normal procedure would be before we would take any action, uh, we would at least have them in to at least listen to their...
schedule this for our next work session.
Which would be, give me a date so I can make sure I can notify them.
Today.
Is it, uh, are we going to go, is this day in January?
It'll be in January.
Okay.
Twenty-second.
The twenty, well, the 21st is a month, is that Martin Luther King Day?
Twenty-seventh, September.
That's a Tuesday. That's because of Martin Luther King Day? Okay, so our meeting on the 22nd, this is a Tuesday.
Right.
January 22nd, okay.
And by the way, this is a known little thing. It's 640,000 tons cubic, or cubic slash cubic yards of material. You divide that by a 20-ton truck, you've got a lot of loads of stuff coming over there. So anyway, it's a big, it is a big deal. And the issue was, where is it going and is that allowed in our code? Sure. Going out of the town of Goshen, taking resources out. There are a number of issues.
Oh, yeah. And even there's, you know, the cleanliness, the droppings, the, you know, the debris.
Well, just selling it out of the town of Goshen.
Yeah.
Like you did say, it would be a spot zone.
Potentially it could be, while you're in this, because you're moving an overlay district zoning of mining into a non-approved or permitted area, RU. If you just allow it for this particular parcel as opposed to all the RU zones in the town, then it could be argued as a spot zone.
That's the way I'd look at it.
Yeah, it'd be, it'd be a legitimate problem. You know, force you to obviously take up other issues down the road, I would suspect, other people in the RU areas. Because some of our RU areas, although we have some residential developments, some of them are quite rural still. And farmers and otherwise, gravel pits, et cetera. But it's something you have to consider.
Thank you, Dennis. Okay. Um, the next item is, I shared with the board that I was going to have a state of the town talk at the Goshen Chamber of Commerce. No, please, no, the police, the police discipline, a letter from the...
Labor Council.
Labor Council.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't...
Okay, but basically, our labor counselor today sent me, and I put your mail in the morning. Um, Walk Hill passed a local law where the town board, instead of going with the, uh, the normal arbitration, arbitration, the town board itself sets up, points an arbiter and is kept within the confines of the town. And this was, uh, challenged by the PBA. And it went to the state Supreme Court or wherever it had to go and it was upheld that the town could do that. And the attorney, our labor law attorney, said, "You know, uh, you probably ought to give serious consideration to this." And, uh, because in the past, whenever there's a discipline or anything and it goes to arbitration, we always lose. We spend a gazillion dollars and we lose. And, and so in this case, it, we're really going to represent the facts and the figures of what we want to happen. So what would happen is, is the police chief would investigate, come up with what he or she would think is appropriate district-wise, and then it would work through the process. But the arbitration would stay within the confines of what we implement. So you're going to get that from mail in the morning. I'll work with Dennis on what we have to do. We're going to have to write a local law, I guess. Set up a public hearing, go through the process. But that's what that's all about. This is the same law that was discussed and I think we all heard about it at the Association of Towns of Board, or Towns of Village meeting last month. Okay. So that's what that's all about. George, you want to, you got the letter in your mail to talk about this Little League
Well, we received a, uh, an answer today. As a matter of fact, this is the first time I'm looking at the letter. Anyway, the background is the Little League, this is out of Craigville Park, the first entrance and then after... Parents got together, a gentleman by the name of David Miss Streter, I guess, wrote a letter to the county saying that they needed a guard rail along that stretch. And we just received this letter back from Commissioner Lee from the Public Works. As I said, I just got it. We have determined that guard rail is not warranted in accordance with New York State Highway Design Manual standards that govern guide rail placement. Therefore, we will not install guide rail within the county road right of way at the area you requested. And it's copied to, you know, the Little League and the county and Boston, so on and so forth. So as a liaison to the, to the recreation, we have discussed this on a number of different occasions and we have some kind of ideas of what we might want to do out there as a, another alternative. So we're going to, we're going to address it one way or the other and I guess the county is going to do the rest.
Okay. Yeah, the, the town board requested this last and they got the same answer. This time, Little League themselves requested, got the same answer. So is that what it is? All right, George, thank you. But it'd be interesting to see what they, what the other ideas are. Okay, does anybody else have anything?
Yeah, I do have one I used before. As the board's aware, Alturi landfilling, uh, together with another applicant have been proceeding in front of the planning board about lot line adjustment, has to do with the new business operation to be placed on Alturi lands. And that connection, uh, some of the conditions of the approval were that certain land was to be dedicated to the town of Goshen. And I have the board's edification, a correspondent from Kelly Norton, the assistant planning board attorney, reciting enclosed, "Please find the offered deed, screen restoration easement and associated tax documents in connection with the Alturi property. These docs are being provided to you as they were required as part of the planning board's conditional approval granted to Alturi on the lot line adjustment application. Please have this matter placed before the board to authorize the supervisor to execute the documents." And again, as indicated, I have the bargain and sale deed, the easement grants and all of the supporting transfer report, beginning's affidavits. And I would request a oral motion to authorize the supervisor to sign these on behalf of the town.
Well, before we do that, is anybody, I don't know what property they want to deed to us. Why, and I, I've never heard this, what I'm saying to you is, this could be not beneficial for the town, or beneficial, but I don't know anything about that. This was, I need to understand why they're giving us property and what is, is it landfill property? Are we going to be liable for it? This, okay, I just need to know.
Yeah, you just need to clarify, yes.
I need to understand what's going on. I think we might have been spaying when we had...
Okay.
No, no, sorry. No, 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 no. Go ahead, yeah. But, but it's fuzzy in the back of my mind as well. This is where the applicant came in and they're, they're behind the firm, they want to put their business. We basically, okay, but then they've got to have a right of way coming out to Hartley Road. Now, I'm not quite sure I understand what land is involved to be given to the town of Goshen. Why us? Okay.
It's, it's a road dedicated, well, of...
That's, that's, when the subdivision is requested and approved, the town asks for road dedication, which means that they're dedicating 25 feet from the center line of the road to the property. That's the dedication that they're taking.
Well, but that's from the man's going to be doing his business to Hartley Road. What's something?
They did a lot much, you know?
Well, the reason I'm asking is, I'm asking what's something? Well, I'm, I'm wondering why, I mean, is this a road that the, that the applicant's going to build for his own?
No, it's a town road, it's Hartley Road. But at any time the subdivision is done on any town road, they ask for a dedication, which is 25 feet from the center line of the road.
The reason that happens is because traditionally and historically, property is described to the center line of the nearest thoroughfare. Obviously, the property owner does not own to the center line of a town, county, or state road. Uh, so with normal practice is, in any instance of a subdivision or a lot line relocation, the applicants are requested, of the applicants, that they dedicate to the town of Goshen that 25 feet from the center line into the applicant's property so as to provide shoulders, get off the pavement, et cetera.
But not all the way back to the mulching up?
Correct.
I'm with you. Okay.
And this is a piece of Hartley Road, of, of which this property is located. And it's normal procedure. Unfortunately, I was hoping I had a map. I don't have a map to show you. It's not attached to the document.
I saw it on the first...
It's on, it's on, exactly. It's on that map.
That they brought to...
Correct. And see, I don't mean to rush the board, it's just a question of, this, one, is impercolating. Two, this is necessary for them to get their final approval. This is, it's conditioned, if you will, upon the receipt by the town of these documents, which again, are in order, they've been reviewed by the planning department, building, and my office. And I confess that my knowledge, I don't think come up Thursday with...
Yes, the applicant is going in for site plan approval. It's a public hearing scheduled for Thursday. There's mulching operation. But they can't go forward with that until the subdivision is approved and done.
But the road dedication, how, how much of the road, is it Hartley Road?
Yes, it's part of Hartley Road.
Is it because we don't own Hartley Road? Is that what you're saying? It's never been dedicated?
No.
Because we're going to be responsible for the maintenance of this thing.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Absolutely, yeah.
So I want to know where, where...
Yeah, what you got to understand is, yeah, unless, unless historically and factually, unless you have a new subdivision, every town within the town of Goshen, every road service within the town of Goshen, if your lot, if you own property there, your description will include dimensions taking your property to the center line of the pavement. Like Doug's house, it would go through the center line of 17A. Obviously, Doug does not own a portion of 17A. So historically, what's happened is the boards, ours included, have, as we get these parcels coming before us, we get them to give up any claim to the pavement. And even more important, to that distance from the edge of pavement into the ditch, into maybe the front lawn, so we can pave, we can cut, we can snow plow, we can ditch. And so it's a normal activity. So I can't say everyone has this because over time, it's been corrected, but then the tradition has happened.
But clarification for Phil, it is only the road that's coming into Hartley perpendicular into, into Hartley because that other land will remain the property of the Alturi property.
Correct.
It's only where that road juncture comes in.
Okay. There's about 2,100 foot of road footage on the Alturi landfill property. That's the only thing that the town can request is that 2,100 feet of dedication. You can't go to the next guy until, in fact, he goes in.
They come in for some reason.
Okay. The 2,100 feet belongs to Alturi landfill. You can add to this, you're not buying that, are you?
No. Technically, Dennis is correct. He's saying that if you took the description of the Alturi property, it would start or end at the center line in the middle of Hartley Road. Now, the town is saying, "We're taking 25 feet. Your property now starts 25 feet from the center of the road," which gives the town the right to...
Holders and pictures. But the, but the point that Phil and I, we found a map in front of this, is it just the width of the driveway coming in or is it the, all the way down that parcel?
It's a little, but long length of Hartley Road.
Okay. The length of road. Which they're purchasing, okay.
Right, which Alturi sits on. And I would say it's the opportunity to gain control over that for the town's purposes. And Jimmy just mentioned the subsequent property owner or adjacent...
That length is only in front of their own property.
Correct.
Right, right.
That's correct.
How far away from the subdivision?
That's correct.
2,100 feet is? But they're, they're buying, they're buying... No, I understand. No, 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 no. But the, the rest that goes along Alturi until Alturi comes in for a subdivision, it is still Alturi property. Right, still Alturi property. So how, how much of that road, it's still 2,100 feet? No, what's, how, how much of the dedication is going to be?
2,100 feet. If, if Alturi's property is 2,111 feet, the town's dedication is now 2,111 feet.
No, that's not what I understand. Maybe I'm missing this? Until Alturi comes in and asks for, or wants it that dedicated to us. But if that road runs along, I mean, for the town, Phil? Well, I think the question here is, let's say Alturi today owns 3,600 feet. They're selling 2,100 feet. We're going to get a 25-foot easement on the 2,100 feet. That balance of it still belongs to Alturi.
That's great.
That's, that's the question we're, we're trying to ask. Is that the only portion? And is that the portion that is in front of the client that's having the subdivision? Or are we asking for that whole dedication from someone that doesn't own it?
Yeah, no, the former.
Okay.
Yeah. And to give you an idea, yeah, it's, it's correct. It's about...
I can't believe it.
All said and done, it's 1.05 acres. So you're aware, it's about 14 courses, 800 feet, 196, 181, 254. Goes a long distance. I haven't had them all up.
Wow.
For instance, so I had... When I did my subdivision on Old Chester Road, there was about 3,200 foot of road footage that went from Old Chester Road up to Duck Farm Road where Jerry was. When I did that subdivision, the town came in and got Phil a dedication, 25 feet to the center of the road, the whole length. It's, it's the town's opportunity to say, "If you don't give this to us, we're not giving you the subdivision."
Oh, yeah, right.
That's how you wake up.
You can't do that anyway, so. No, no, I understand. I'm not, I, I understand. Okay, we simply like to thank Moses and... Any more discussion?
Just for the board's edification, as the supervisor knows, he'll have to sign these. They all be no rights, et cetera. I assume normally, his normal practice is he'll grill me tomorrow and he'll go over all these details just like... Yeah, no, so I'm for your own education.
That's me, yeah. Our long maps will be...
Right, right.
That's normally what we do. We pull down, have Neil come down.
Okay. George, any questions?
No, I, I have something to announce after this is done.
Okay. Madam Clerk, can I roll a cold vote, please?
Counselor Mencaterina?
Aye.
Counselor Lyle?
Aye.
Counselor Mendelsohn?
Aye.
Counselor Capella?
Aye.
Supervisor Booty?
Aye. Moses McCarys, thank you very much. That was easy. What else you got, Dennis?
That's all I have.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Okay.
That's all.
Anybody else got anything?
George, I just wanted to basically announce that one of my new responses to 2013 is that I'm going to be the liaison to the assessor's office. For those of you who are not aware of it, we have now contracted with the county to do our assessing work along with having one full-time person here. So, I'll be meeting with the assistant, with John McCary, a meeting with him on Friday at 9 o'clock over at his office to then discuss what I have to do.
George, could you speak to me before that meeting?
You want to come with me?
I would love to, but I don't think the board would want to pay for my time.
I thought it would be...
I know. I joke, but...
I thought it would be a pro bono.
I do want to... That's why I want to talk to you.
You've got an extra half hour.
Okay. I would like to make sure that we have some representation up there this week because, you know, we didn't...
I've been... I've been touching base with Francine every day and I was in today. There was a person there that was usually works in Chester. I forget her name now, but I was speaking with her. Eric, one of the assistant directors, I forget his last name. He was there on Friday and there were a number of questions and people had called about their assessor. He called, he had every one of those people back. So, as of like noon today, when I was up there, everything was working fine up to this particular point.
Good.
Wasn't too many people up there.
That's right. Okay. We'd like to make a motion. We'd like to make a motion, we adjourn the meeting, go to executive session, which we tend not to return, to discuss the police department personnel issue, police department consultant update, and CSEA negotiations update. All favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Me neither.
Yeah. Yeah. The weather was better than expected. I thought it'd be cold. What the heck?
What did I see in my mind? These guys trying to...
The board never wants...
You're back.